Okay, we're gonna call this meeting to order. Reorganization meeting for December 5th, 2023. Start with roll call.
Uh, Mr. Donovan. Juanita Thorp.
Present.
That's the only names we have.
Since Juanita is the only over member, she has to serve as the temporary president.
Yeah.
Okay, so at this time, we will read the certificates of our new elected school board directors. For Wilkinsburg, starting with Monica Garcia. Amanda Barber. Latonya Washington.
Who do you want us to stand for this one minute?
Probably up here, up in front.
Okay, next.
So I'm gonna go to the center, we'll do it one at a time.
What do you usually do?
They have me do it both ways, they usually is the whole group.
However you prefer, you can do them like.
This is important, I'm just invited to tell me what you want.
Did she text you again?
Yeah, she said she's on her way, so.
Cause I know she was going for a jitney and she called me and I gave her a jitney number. Two way.
Did we say?
Who, who we wait? Charmaine Gamble, she's in.
I just wanna start individually, I call it Monica Garcia first, so we can start that way.
And I'll stay long enough to swear if whoever needs to be sworn in.
Yeah.
Okay. And there's Monica Garcia. You wanna raise your right hand for me? Repeat after me, I'm Monica Garcia.
I'm Monica Garcia.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support?
That I will support.
Obey?
Obey.
And defend the Constitution?
And defend the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the Constitution?
And the Constitution.
Of this Commonwealth?
Of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge my duties?
And that I will discharge my duties.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
What you have for pineapple?
Yeah.
Next, we have Ms. Amanda Barber.
Raise your right hand, repeat after me.
I'm Amanda Barber.
I am Amanda Barber.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support?
That I will support.
Obey?
Obey.
And defend the Constitution?
And defend the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the Commonwealth.
Of the Commonwealth.
And I will discharge my duties?
And I just, and I will discharge my other duties?
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
School board director?
Yeah, school board director.
And next is Latonya Washington.
Can you raise your right hand?
For the 20th, 23rd.
Right, and see after me, is Alatoni Washington?
Alatoni Washington.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support?
That I will support.
Obey?
Obey.
And defend the Constitution?
And defend the Constitution of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution of Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of Commonwealth. And that I will discharge my duties?
And I will discharge my duties.
Of my office with fidelity?
Of my office with fidelity.
Sorry, whoever's pinned, Amanda. We bring him back the baby to the board.
Is Ashley Coleman?
Red. You got to say, I Ashley Coleman?
I Ashley Coleman.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support?
That I will support.
Obey?
Obey.
And defend the Constitution?
And defend the Constitution of the United States. Of the United States.
And the Constitution?
And the Constitution.
Of the Commonwealth.
Of the Commonwealth.
And I will discharge?
And I will discharge.
The duties of my office. And how long did we say before she, this Gamble, her line sister just went to pick her up at the bus stop?
Oh, okay, there's no one.
Yeah, I didn't even know who she was, she just told me. But she should be here in five minutes.
Okay.
So y'all can go ahead on with the business until I get y'all's last person in here.
Do you proceed with the meeting, or if you want, you can make this Gamble be alive?
It's up to you.
Do we need to redo the roll call?
Uh, no, I mean, go ahead.
Just, just, just add him as president, I'll just mark him as president.
That's all you need to do.
So at this time, then we will proceed with nominations for president. Are there any nominations? I would like to nominate Amanda Barber for president. You need a second. Second?
Doesn't require a second. Let's say there's other nominations.
Are there any other nominations? Well, if there are no, not, if there are.
Ask for motion to close.
Can I have a motion to close, please?
Motion to close.
Motion to close. And I have a second.
You do for that.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Monica. Motion's closed, president is?
But you gotta vote on it.
Oh, sorry.
Does anyone need a motion on the second?
Ashley.
Ashley.
Ashley's second.
We'll start with Ashley?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
You stand.
Uh, let's see, I guess I could do Ashley. Monica. Yes.
I want some blue.
Yes, yes, abstain?
Yes.
Oh, I did the wrong one.
Oh, well, you had those for two minutes.
That was the, those are nominations.
We need to vote.
Alright. Ashley. Monica. Yes, yes, yes. No, I'll copy it, I have it. Oh, sorry.
So we will open, now open the floor for nominations for vice, vice president?
I nominate Ashley Coleman. Better get the name right. Ashley Commins.
Is there any other nomination from the floor? Motion to close nominations for vice president?
Motion.
And we do not need a second.
Need a second.
How second?
I'm not ready to do it.
I'll second.
And now we need to vote.
Yes.
Yes.
So do you need a motion in the second for the count?
And then Monica.
Yeah, I would be, I would, I give the motion.
Second? Alright. Now we need to actually vote.
Yes, so roll call.
Oh.
No, I was saying roll call.
Oh, you need to do a roll call?
I mean, we're voting.
We're voting.
Oh, okay, alright, everybody.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. So I was, yes.
Abstain.
Was there a first and second for the motion?
And they made a motion, Monica made.
So Amanda, congratulations. Congratulations, Ashley. And congratulations to all the new board members. Now the meeting will proceed.
And now, now, now nobody gave me like notes on what to do, and I'm just like, uh, but next up, let's do that.
Well, we're at, uh, board committees, um, chairs. Yeah, we're all passed down.
Okay, so now we're doing committees, um, at this time. I, so we, I, we should probably have some discussion about this before I just assign things.
Yeah.
So right now, Eastern Area Special Schools are, is, Ed is doing that right now. Um, Forbes Road was Michael, and he is no longer on the board, is anyone interested in taking that role over?
For Forbes Road, usually.
Yeah.
So I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, the question, because we have new board members, there's also a board member who, a new board member who has not been voted. And just yet, is there possible that we can chair that, I mean?
Yeah, can we table this until the 19th?
Well, so you also can, like, if somebody, nobody volunteers for Forbes Road, for example, you can always circle back with her and say, hey, is there anything you're interested in? You know, this, this is what's open or available.
So maybe we do the ones that we're able to tonight, and then we come back to the ones that we can't, we can do that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
We can leave some.
You could already watch.
Okay.
If you had a point tonight, you could ask people to contact you with their interest and deal with it at the, whatever the next meeting is, so it's up to you.
I, I, I think I prefer to do it that way, people to contact me with their interest, and then we, uh, we finalize things on the 19th. I like to hear, I don't, I don't like to be unilateral.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And also for the new board member, Latonya, you're used to, you've been on the board, but Charmaine doesn't know, unless.
Right, I'll, I'll clue her when she gets there.
Okay, are there, are there committees that you're interested in chairing? Okay. Alright, so that's what we'll do, we'll, we'll send it out to board members to, to express their interest in these particular committees, and then we'll make the assignments on the 19th.
Sounds good.
Okay, so our next agenda item is to approve the meeting calendar. Uh, there were two options that were listed on the agenda. Option number one is a list of calendar meetings that are, for the whole year, all of them would be joint planning and legislative meetings.
Can you, can you bring those up?
Yeah, I'm doing that right now.
That's the first one?
Yeah. Or, or it's not, or it's the second one.
We just looked at.
Well, 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 option one opened option two.
Uh, perfect, okay. So, um, this is option two. Option two is every other month is a joint planning and legislative session, with every other month being both planning and legislative sessions occurring. So that's what that table is showing us. Um, that means that in January, we'd have one meeting, in February, we have two meetings, March, one meeting, April, two meetings, so on and so forth for the rest of the year. Both of these options, uh, put December 3rd as our reorg meeting. Um, I believe that's the first Wednesday in December.
That's a Wednesday on a Tuesday?
I believe it's a Wednesday. December 3rd?
That should be a Tuesday.
Is it Tuesday? Oh, sorry, is it Tuesday? You're right.
Yes, it's Tuesday.
First Tuesday.
And the only odd one up there, you'll see on April, April 1st, April 23rd, we do have a election.
Yeah, that's the primary.
So we bumped it, cause we didn't know how many people would be involved, we bumped it to follow the Tuesday.
That makes sense, but other than that, they're all the 3rd and 4th Tuesdays, correct?
So the April meeting will be on the 30th and 21st?
Well, we haven't decided yet, so right now, this is one option for the calendar, the other option for the, you heard of that other one, you're not sure what the April meeting looks like. My guess is it's gonna be the 30th. So this, the other option is to have all of the meetings be joint planning, so that would be what we have. January 23rd, February 27th, March 26th, April 30th, May 28th, June 25th, July 23rd, August 27th, September 24th, October 22nd, November 26th, December 3rd, and December 17th. Now, for both of these options, what's listed here is that the committee meetings will be held, uh, on, three of the committees are set to be held on the second Tuesday of each month, and one of the committees is set to be held on the first Tuesday of each month. My suggestion is we tweak those committee meetings a little bit, um, so that we're not having three whole committee meetings on one Tuesday. Um, so, that, that, yeah. So I, I, I go for the option that gives us one meeting a month with a slight tweak to committees. Yeah, we're gonna, we can pause and, can we do that?
Yeah, so then Charmaine's got the schedules.
That's good, cause I have a computer. I'm sure it's accurate.
Oh, no.
You, you, you have a, you have a computer over here, that you can log into, if you, if you don't want to.
I show my marriage. I show my usual solemnly swear or affirm. Do solemnly, do solemnly swear and affirm? That I will support? That I will support, obey? Obey? And defend? And defend? The Constitution? The Constitution of the United States. Of the United States. Constitution? And the Constitution of the Commonwealth. That I will discharge? The duties of my office? The duties of my office with fidelity. Thank you very much. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, we love all y'all.
Yeah, it was a pleasure to be sworn in by you.
For a couple of years, yeah, I appreciate that, so, uh, I'll see y'all, like, I won't disappear. Like I said, I'm excited, I want to do not change that.
Alright, before you go though, I just want to say thank you, cause I know you've been doing this a long time, 18 years, we clarified today, so, I appreciate it, appreciate what you've done for the community, you're servicing the community. So, get the coin, here's a Greensburg coin, congratulations.
Thank you.
You're servicing the community, thank you. I know people don't know, she also comes in and does our, our safety, our student safety group? And this year, there was probably 40 or 50, she did every, instead of doing groups?
Every single.
Every single one that she did. Also, here's something to think about us when you wake up in the morning, alright?
Thanks y'all.
Thanks for giving 30 years.
I really appreciate it.
Thank you for coming in.
I'm tired, I don't know what I can do with the singing, but let me know if I can do anything.
Will do.
Thanks again.
Okay, so... Do we need to do another, like, now that she's been sworn in, now that Charmaine's been sworn in? Okay, you're right. So Charmaine, what we're voting on right now is the calendar for the year?
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine, and, and there's an old lot of loggers, you need, oh, I guess you should have the log and the other stuff like that.
Well, just, well, not, but she can follow along if she wants to stay.
So right now, the motion that we're discussing right now, the calendar for the year, we have two options that are posted on that agenda item. One of the options, the one that I'm recommending, is it combines this joint, it combines planning and legislative meetings into one joint planning legislative meeting a month. Rather than doing every other month, a joint meeting, and then the other month doing one planning and one legislative meeting. Um, so, the example that we have brought up right now, that Charmaine brought up for us right now, shows us the every other month. So, this calendar would give us one meeting that's a joint planning legislative meeting in January, two meetings in February, one meeting in March, two meetings in April, one meeting in May, two meetings in June, one meeting in July, two in August, one in September, two in October, one in November, and then two in December. Um, the other option, if Charmaine could bring that one up for visual, gives us one meeting a month the whole year. With the exception of December, because we still need a reorganization meeting in December, so we'd have two meetings in December. For both of these options, we have the same committee meetings listed. Um, so, right now, we have Facilities slash Kelly Renovation Committee for the first Tuesday each month. We have a Safety and Security meeting that's the second Tuesday each month, Policy Committee, the second Tuesday each month, Curriculum Committee, the second Tuesday each month. My recommendation is that we move one of those that's, uh, that are all, there are three committee meetings that are on the second Tuesday of every month. My suggestion would be that we move one, just to kind of lower the burden on that day. Um, but, that's my suggestion, so, we can have additional discussion on that, not, uh, set it up. Any thoughts?
I guess, would it make a difference as to who's on which committee, as far as spreading them too thin or not?
That absolutely would, um, something that, uh, we were talking, we were discussing is that, right before this, the agenda item was to appoint people to committees. Uh, what we decided to do was to go ahead and put it, the word out to the board members, to say, please provide, um, what committee meetings you're interested, what committees you're interested in chairing into me, and then we'll go ahead and vote on that in December. Or I'll make the appointments, I guess, it's not really a vote.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's just appoint those people. So yeah, I, we don't have to change those days and times, I'm okay with it, but, I know it's a lot for like.
We can always adjust committee meetings, I think what you want to approve tonight probably is, do you wanna do the joint planning legislative or the alternate? We can always look at committees.
At a time, yeah.
So, but as far as the joint planning legislative sessions, or do you prefer?
Alternating.
The alternating?
I prefer alternating, if you want to hear that.
You prefer the?
Alternate.
Yeah, one command and one.
Yeah, only because on some months, well, I haven't been here in two years, but on some months, you might have a long meeting, and those would be what little ones being up till 10, 11, 12 o'clock at night, it's a piece of work.
Yeah, the goal of the committees is try to prevent that, cause we do the action consent.
Yes.
But, you can do, I like said.
Have you seen that, the, the consent votes that we did, we started doing?
So the work we've done over the past year is that a lot of the work's being done in committee, meaning that, you know, the committee chair, the chair everybody who set the agenda, uh, you know, by reaching out to anybody, you can reach out to gather that information. In that committee meeting is when a lot of the discussion's happening, there are some things that can be approved in committee, I'm still trying to figure out what is and isn't that way, so forgive me for not knowing exactly.
Would they go back to the old one? Your committees, when we had all committees, it's back to the old one?
I'm not sure if it was.
When we had all committees.
Yeah, I mean, right, as Amanda was explaining, board has recently had committees do a lot of the legwork, and then the, uh, what you see on the legislative meeting is a consent agenda.
Yeah.
Where the committees recommending several items, basically at one vote.
So, the bulk of what our meetings, our legislative meetings have been so far, is really the chairs of committees giving their reports of what occurred in committee. Then when we get to the voting, it's the consent vote, where we just, we vote on that. We still have discussion in our legislative meetings, and especially when they're joint planning legislative, we still have discussion. Um, but it tends to grow faster, cause we all trust the chairs of the committees, right, to do the work that they need to do.
My, I would go for the one, the joint every month, um, because of, because we are doing committees. So when we first started, and we had planning and legislative, we didn't have committee meetings, and then we went to committee meetings, planning meetings, legislative meeting, it was just a lot of meetings. And then executive session, and other meetings, you had to, so, I think that.
Yeah.
We did enough joint to figure out that we can make it work, if we're well-prepared and organized, and people are looking at things ahead of time, um, in the pre-planning, for plan, you know, for the meeting is happening, and the agenda is put together and well thought out, uh, with the new consent, the way we, we vote with the consent agreement, I think that, that would be my suggestion, is that it's easier on everybody. You can get through it, we, we were getting through those meetings at a pretty good amount of time.
Yeah, I think we were averaging about, between 90 and minutes and two hours.
Yeah. Whereas before, we would take the same amount of time just to get through one planning or legislative, and you're getting to the planning the same amount of time. It's just a lot of preparation.
The only thing I can say as far as being new, if it's gonna save time, and it can be concise and efficient, then just join. And continue with your community.
I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
I didn't mean to cut you off, sorry.
I, I agree, join.
Yeah, I, I like the joint meetings, though, that we've been able to do, and the occasional few meetings where we knew we had a, a lengthy meeting. I felt like those, partly felt like that was when we had our committee meetings before, or, uh, yeah, before the actual meetings started, like a finance meeting at 5:00, and then there was an executive session before that, and then we'd start our meeting at 7:00, but we still would get out by like 9:00, 9:30, um, if we're everybody else, cause we're just talking.
Meetings that would go really long were before we were doing committees.
Yeah.
Because we would be talking about everything, we had the planning, and then we'd get to legislative, and people that hadn't been at the planning, or hadn't prepared for the meeting, and looking. Because we would be talking about everything, we have the planning, and then we get to legislative and people that hadn't been at the planning or hadn't prepared for the meeting and looked over things, then we're asking all the questions and more discussion at legislative. So those meetings were both just drawn out, but I feel like it's on on the way to make it more concise and efficient.
And just for one edit on here, I just know the finance committee is not on there, and that's usually.
I thought it was on finance, scroll down.
Is it?
Yeah.
It's on there.
Oh, no, you're right.
No, it's on the other one.
It's on, it it it's on Wednesdays, isn't it, or, sorry.
No, it was on the Tuesday.
Tuesday, the third Tuesday of the month, is there any other one?
You know, I saw facilities, I thought I saw.
I saw facilities, same.
So just to let you know, on there, usually the finance committee, I apologize, is not on there, it's usually the third Tuesday of every month at five o'clock.
Yeah, I think with waiting, holding off to reorganize whose chairing committees, we should probably just say we're approving the legislative and planning meetings today. And then the committee meetings will be.
I agree, because if somebody takes a committee and at four o'clock is not good for them, then that's a waste of time.
Exactly, so. I think we're ready to vote.
Yeah.
Does any more discussion?
Just, just so I'm clear, because we're not confirmed on our committee, we need to keep, uh.
Can't get my words out, it's okay.
We we keep the one month combined and then the next month too, until we can confirm if we can do the committee.
No, no, we are doing committees, committees are happening. We just aren't setting the time of the committee meetings.
Yes, with the once a month schedule.
With either schedule. We can't really set the to the time of the committees until we know that.
Move the chair.
Right.
Yeah, so we're just approving.
Right now, we're just approving our. Right.
Got you.
Our legislative and planning meeting.
Combined?
Either way, definitely.
That's who we're voting on now.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Any more discussion? Go ahead and take those.
Read the read the version.
Board action is requested to approve the twenty twenty-four Wilkinsburg School District Board Director's meeting calendar as attached, we probably want to.
You have to say which one you you're making.
The combined, what I heard was the combined planning and.
The ones you want combined.
Let's say it.
So that was option two. Or we could just say combined for for disambiguation.
Just pause that.
Say, I mean, joining.
Planning and legislative.
Planning and legislative.
Correct, yes. Yeah, joint planning and legislative meeting calendar. Wonderful, Charmaine, thank you.
Thank you, Charmaine.
Make the motion. Ashley, second.
I vote yes.
Yes.
Yes for Ashley.
Yes for Charmaine.
Okay, so I'm just gonna mark your amendments and whoever is gonna say no, tell me who you are staying.
Are there any no votes? Are there any extensions? Alright. Uh, what do I say here?
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Okay, board action is requested to appoint Dr. Dennis Basak to the school board to fill a vacant seat.
So moves Ashley, second, my.
So I don't know if there's any discussion on that matter, but I can just give a little background, which is that we are short currently two seats. Um, so we're looking to appoint Dennis Basak, who had been on the board, um, and is the treasurer of the board. Regardless of whether or not he's on the board, I've got it out, he's still the treasurer.
So, I I might, um, wanna, like, speak. Is he filling a two-year or a four?
That is a good question.
Two-year, okay.
Appointments are two-years.
Gotcha.
Okay.
That's great.
Because then we need to know which, like, because Ashley and I were.
Doesn't matter, he's filling a two-year seat.
I still don't know.
And then you have another two-year seat.
Right, I'm taking my four-year seat.
I shouldn't have taken your four-year seat, right?
I assume I have a choice. But whether, yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's what I was wondering, like, I didn't know if he had to choose a four-year, like, you know.
No, you don't, they don't get to choose a four-year, when you're appointed, you'll serve until the next primary and you have to run for reelection.
Okay. Alright.
Votes?
We'll start with no. Yes, Charmaine.
And I'm a yes.
Are you sure?
Is he gonna do it?
You have to say it.
Oh, motion carries, thank you. And we're gonna need like a little tiny little.
Charmaine's good, she does.
She knows, she knows how to run the thing. Board action is requested to adjourn the meeting.
Yes.
We'll need a motion. Second.
Yes. Yes.
Oh, yeah, we're gonna have to exchange as board members.
Alright. Motion carries. Alright, good job.
Alright, we got three then.
We did it, we did it.